If we look at, and if we look at designs of schools, we see that there are, there are multiple learning spaces for kids that are different. Not, I don't want us to think that we're going back to the 1970s and building schools with no walls because I don't think that was such a hot idea either. But what we're asking for, what we're, what we see in research and we see in practice is that in addition to what we all know as regular classrooms, there are learning spaces that are different to accommodate different learning, personalized learning, and I'd like to go back to the comment Mr. Kennedy made because it was, it was an important comment, personalized learning and the ability to regroup kids. Not necessarily move walls to do that, but to create a design in which these kids can be moved so that entire classrooms are not taken up. One of the criticisms that we have heard in the past is, for example, three students need remediation. And someone, someone stopped me on the street and said, "I was in one of the schools the other day and there were three kids in that whole big classroom." And so if we think about the design of future buildings, we can design spaces that are appropriate to help three students meet their potential, to help 10 students meet their potential. So it's not necessarily wall-less or moving walls, but it is an opportunity for us to have a flexible space to reorganize kids as their learning dictates. That's, that was the point that I tried to make and probably didn't make it very well. The comments that, that Mr. Kennedy made and Mrs. Codasco made, I think are worth, if you look at our strategic plan and you look at the work that was done for well over a year, you see the term personalized learning. That's not a term that we made up. That's not a term that we all decided looked good on a sheet of paper. That's actually a term that comes out of a lot of thinking and research and education about the need to do what I just explained. Because as we know from enrollments, students don't come in bunches of 25. They also, they also don't, it's, they don't learn the same way on the same day. And so when a teacher has the flexibility to say, "I can take this 10, you take this 15, you take this five, tomorrow we regroup," and we have the facility to do that, it, it gives the teachers the leverage so that they can be the very best that they know how to be. There are issues in some of our schools right now where we can't adopt the learning because either the space is not there or the space just, you can't afford to take the classroom to do what we need to do. And so you can, you'll often see remedial students in hallways, you know, where teachers need the opportunity to help five kids for an extra 15 minutes to get them over this hump. Well, the only place to do that is a hallway. I'm not so sure that hallway learning is appropriate. I do know that with retrofitting and redesign and rethinking this, we could create appropriate learning spaces for all kids regardless of what they needed. So that, that was, that was more to what, to what I was trying to say and probably didn't say very well. But I think the point Mr. Kennedy raises about the learning needs and the points that Mrs. Codasco spoke to about specialization are important. If we are going to be successful with a changing population in Williamsburg-James City County, then we have to recognize that we do have to have specialties, that we do have to have different opportunities that children can choose. And so one of the many eyes that are on the future is how do we best do that? What kinds of programmatic decisions can we make that would drive school design and school reimagination so that we could get to the point where students who had interest in STEM, interest in ID, interest in the arts, interest in manufacturing, interesting, I mean, I'd like to see us get to the point where we did more with engineering, did more with computer information technology. I think those are areas that we have heard up and down the peninsula are needed occupations. And so what, what kind of environment or can we create to best promote that thinking? That really has been the conversation that, I admit, I started when I came here and I know that I am the latest superintendent, but I'll take full responsibility for changing the conversation and saying, you know, a lot of what I've heard since I've been in the community a relatively short period of time is that there has often been criticism of decisions that are short-sighted. What I'm trying to avoid is a short-sighted decision. And I understand and respect completely that, you know, at the end of the day financially, what can do is what we can do. But I want to put on the table the very best thinking about the needs of kids for the next 20 or 30 or 40 years and then determine how we as a community can get there.
Let me just make one point, and Mrs. Codasco and then Mr. Nichols. I think you brought up about whether the Stonehouse site was looked at. I think that, I mean, I can't answer for you, but to say that we, that is why we asked for the mapping to be done, to see where the students were coming from, and then the map showed us that this is where they were, which is why a centrally located school here somewhere near this area was, at this point was the one that we needed to be looking at. Is there something?
No.
Okay. Mrs. Codasco?
And I also, I think we also are conscious of the fact that it's expensive to extend the sewer and the water and all that sort of thing.
Oh, that's there.
Right. But what I'm saying is as far as looking at, at places to go, that was always a consideration as well. So we, you know, if there was another place that we thought was more optimum that wasn't there, we wouldn't have suggested that. But I also want to say to you that yesterday I sat in a meeting at Thomas Nelson, just a few minutes ago, I was down the hallway with the 21st Century Career Ready. And what I want, I want to really communicate to this body is that we are seeking partnerships everywhere that we can seek them. We are talking to Thomas Nelson to make sure that our dual enrollment options are good because we want to make sure that we are offering choices and options and we are partnering with businesses. We celebrated our very first manufacturing day this year in James City. We had wonderful cooperation with your economic development person who brought kids and guidance counselors and teachers and school board members to different places. And so, you know, we, we envision this as something that we are working with businesses and we are working with our funders to really do something that's well done and significant and cost-effective.
Mr. Nichols?
I, I think as we look at our requirements for education that we're facing in our day, they're entirely different than when we were going through school. So it's hard to, our frame of reference, our frame of reference may be what we've experienced in the past or what our kids have gone through and, and that evolution is ongoing. When we're looking at differentiated learning in the classroom, we're reminded that the state of Virginia has an on-time graduation rate that we have to meet, as well as the other things that are still the leftover from No Child Left Behind. So behind the background of all of this looms all of these requirements that a school division, ours along with the other 136 other school divisions in the Commonwealth of Virginia that are facing. And we want to make our kids have access to quality education no matter how they are able to access the information, receive the information. So my daughter, who just left, is a graduate of the School of Lafayette and she was, she had an IEP throughout her old, her education. So I'm really familiar with how important, you know, helping children who learn differently get the resources that they need to do that. And it, it takes more one-on-one stuff. And so there, there are cost requirements that not always are covered by the federal government or by local governments or state government, but are covered by local government to help our children who learn differently. So when we're looking at our buildings, we want to make sure that they're, they're providing the context in which our children are as much advantaged as any other child in any other part of the country or the Commonwealth. And, and I think, you know, I speak for myself, I'm as much as conscientious or concerned about spending. I'm not a, I'm not necessarily a spendthrift, you know, and I pay taxes too. And I want to get a bang for the buck. And, you know, and I think in terms of James City County, we do get a bang for our buck. And I'm proud of that. And as we move forward with this and try to build consensus of how to do right for our kids, not only presently, but for the future, it's what it's all about, you know. They'll only remember us for the decisions that sometimes that we didn't make right, rather than all the many that we did right. So, but I want to be on the right side for our kids as we face this. And, and we have to remember that behind it are all those requirements that are laid upon us by the federal and state government that we need to meet. And oftentimes are mandates that are not, that doesn't come any dollars, within any dollars along with the stream.
I, we, our next slide I imagine is going to introduce us to the central office, which of course all this is going hand in hand, so, you know, and we are on a tight timeline. So I think Ms. Stone is going to give us the information about the central office facility, but then prior to us leaving, before we all leave this table, we have to call the question, so to speak, or you all have to give us some idea about how we need to proceed. And, you know, we've gotten criticism over, over the central, but again, the two are going, if we need to leave here, we need to go somewhere. And, and so, Ms. Stone.
Sure. Sure. So the central office facility, just to recap some of the other steps along the way, in December of 2012, the school board was presented with a space needs analysis and there's a copy of that in your folder. In September of 2013, there was a presentation regarding alternatives to the school board and also to the liaison committee, and there is a copy of that presentation in your folder. In October of 2013, the project was put on hold pending the outcome of the middle school site. And then based upon the options that we have shared tonight, we, the central office facility was included in the proposed capital improvement plan. I did want to share the cost estimate. Originally, we had a space analysis that was, was performed internally. It suggested 30,000, just over 37,000 square feet. We did share it with one of our contract engineers. He looked at some of the numbers and said, "Ah, you know, I think it maybe need to be closer to 40,000." Certainly if we make, make, move towards design, the first step would be to have a professional look at our space needs analysis because it was performed internally and just to really quantify that number or assist us with it. So the cost that is included is based on $200 per, $200 per square foot with a 15% design and contingency. At 37,000 square feet, that's 8.5 million, but at 40,000 square feet, that's 9.2 million. We did want to include this. This is also in the liaison presentation, but when we were going through the steps, we looked at, you know, lease versus buying new. And looking at a 40,000 square foot facility at a cost of 9.7 million, if you look at a 20-year debt issuance for that with 5% interest rate, that's 15.5 million over 20 years and at the end of that 20 years, the facility is owned. Compared, we did have some developers that provided us with some preliminary non-binding numbers that indicated that an initial lease for a 40,000 square foot facility would be about $750,000 with a 2% escalation factor. They'd want at least a 15-year lease term. And if you assume that that 2% continued out 20 years, at the end of 20 years, it'd be a cost of 18.2 million and you would not own the building. So we just wanted to share those numbers again. Again, they were included in the liaison presentation.
The other important point is that, that money for that lease comes out of the operating budget.
That, that would be operating expense, correct. So finally, the central office facility recommendation is a 40,000 square foot facility on the city and county-owned land with an estimated project cost of 9.7 million. You see it's 9.2 for the facility and then an additional 500,000. We had been provided with a land estimate of one to $2 million. So the initial proposed CIP, we're really unsure, do we need land or not? So the initial proposed CIP has the 11.7 million. I think if we have more direction, then we would have a better feel of what that number should look like. And that is all I have in regards to the central office facility.
I would be remiss if I didn't ask this question. I've been contacted by members of the Planning Commission of James City County regarding the central office and CIP. The policy committee reviewed and met with you folks and feel like they were somewhat misled, as we've read in the newspaper, about whether or not this was going to be put forward this year. Two of the members of that committee are here today and, you know, I'm certain that they, they would have some feedback if asked, but can you elaborate on that?
Well, I will say that, and we had some communications with the county and there was a request to provide them with information regarding proposed capital improvement projects. And we indicated, or they indicated to us at that time, because I was new, that we understand that this is preliminary and subject to change. Until the superintendent proposes his budget in February, it's quite frankly a work in progress. So, you know, I apologize that that occurred, but I don't think that was the intent. My, from my perspective, I thought that it was, again, the county had indicated that this is just a typical process and that we realize it's subject to change. So I now have a better understanding of that process.
Okay. Because the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors adopt the capital improvements project list, and that was not in there at that point. And it may change that ranking of projects if this were to be put into that equation. So I guess, you know, my, my thought process would be is that the Planning Commission may be asked to weigh into this again if that CIP process has been skewed somewhat.
And unfortunately, because the schedule is so different, I'm not sure how we can do better next year. So maybe that's something we can discuss with staff because quite frankly, that request was in August and September and, you know, we don't have that information prepared at that time.
I certainly, I certainly regret this confusion and it was never the intention of the school division to confuse or mislead anybody. But I, I feel compelled to say that this whole thing has been confusing since November when basically the brakes were put on the work that I was ready to recommend four months ago. And we were unable to make a decision because we were in a chicken and egg situation. One decision led to another. And so how that got transferred into being taken off the CIP, I can't explain. I can only apologize for, but it has been very clear, I think, to the liaison committee and to everybody who's been involved with this, that this decision rested on, A, was Blair going to be used as a middle school or not? B, was there support for a middle school somewhere else? C, was there land somewhere else upon which to put a middle school? And D, given all of that, was there support for a central office? Starting last January, January 2013, directed by the county, a committee of us, the managers and others, were directed to start figuring out this central office plan. And it was clearly communicated to the school division that the, the intent, the, the interest of the county was to purchase a building or find land upon which to build a building as opposed to lease. And that's why the school division began doing the work that they did and making the presentations that we did at liaison committee meetings. So I will accept the fact that this has been a little bit confusing and, and my purpose of presenting the options to the board and saying, "This is what I think," is simply to say, "Here are the facts that the school division has at the present time. Here's what we know to be true. And based on that information, this is the recommendation we're making. If the situation changes, then okay. But at this point, time is ticking. We've already lost a year. I was hoping to have the middle school resolved so that it would be open in 2017. That ship has sailed. So now we're shooting for 2018. If we spend another six months debating this, we'll be looking at 2019."
And Dr. Constantino, I appreciate that. And I would like for us all as a board to, to improve the communication with the schools and, and the county. I think it's crucial that we have open communication with the, with supervisors, with council members, with the elected school board members, also with our, with our administrative leadership and that, that there be a communication. And that we really take advantage and utilize the school board liaison committee also as, utilizing that as a communication tool and making sure everybody's on the same page because it's evident that that wasn't necessarily the case. So, you know, I appreciate what you just said and I think moving forward, it is one of, my goals will be to make sure that, that there is that open communication and that it's very clear when something's coming up that everyone's, get, everyone has the information and then if there's input requested, that everyone provides the necessary input. Another suggestion I would have, because I know it seemed to take an inordinate amount of time for us to schedule this meeting, is that one suggestion I have is if we can all agree on a date to put on our adopted calendars at our organizational meeting.
That's a great idea.
And that way it's there. And I would suggest that it be done in February, early February, before your, before your budget comes out and so that we're, we're ahead of, we're ahead of the game and the communication is out there. And if there are any concerns, it's out there ahead of the budget, your proposed budget coming out. So that's what, I would ask if that's agreeable with the, with the city council and the school board and the James City County Board of Supervisors, that we all decide, agree on a date and time for February, early February 2015, that that would be helpful.
I don't get a vote, but speaking, I think on behalf of, of Mr. Tuttle and, and Mr. Powell, we welcome a date that's predetermined, so that'd be great.
But if I could, I would just like to step back, just, just take a step back for one second because I do want to revisit because I want to state strongly that we never wanted to mislead anyone. It has always been that we realized we were here, but if we were not here any longer, we had to have a place to go. So if there was a miscommunication, for that, we apologize. But we were, you know, some pretty serious accusations were made in the newspaper about how we operate, which I feel quite frankly were very unfair. We have, you know, we, we're not out trying to find a, a big Taj Mahal building. We employ 1,400 people. We want to, we have a lot of business that we do every day. We have to have a place to conduct that business. We tried previously at Mounts Bay Road, as you know, in a very small building and we leased buildings all over the place. That, that didn't, wasn't for the benefit of the taxpayer or quite frankly, the school division. We operate much better in the building that we are in because we are together with our operations building out at Jolly Pond Road. But, but we, we know, this is a large space. We don't necessarily need this big of a space, but it filled a need. You needed us to get out of the building at Mounts Bay Road. We had this available and we came here to do so. The only thing that we are operating under is if we, if this space is needed, our facility and our central office staff needs a place to go. They need a place to be able to do professional development. They need a place to conduct their day-to-day business. And I don't feel that an apology is needed for this school division to be able to conduct our business for this county and the city. So I, you know, we never misled anybody. If there was a miscommunication, then we certainly will own that, but we, it was simply based on, if we're out of here, we got to go somewhere. If we're here, we're good. So, Mr. Filing.
Ma'am. I think, I think today's exchange has been productive and good. It's the type of conversation that we need to have. I think it's useful, the structure that we have where the school system is charged with coming up with the plan and then executing it and then being almost forced to come make the case to the funding bodies to justify what's, why their plan is worthwhile and why it deserves the taxpayer's support. And that's a healthy tension that we've seen in the past where that healthy tension has been an unhealthy tension and it's gone in a less than productive direction. And I think in the past several years, Dr. Constantino, I think you deserve a fair amount of credit for this, whether you want to take it or not, for, for helping put us in a better place. I don't believe the school board is interested in building fancy buildings. I don't, I think they're interested in maximizing schools and not maximizing the size, but maximizing the educational experience of each and every child in that school. It was eerily familiar hearing your description about what a 21st century school should be like because it was strangely reminiscent of the same thing you said back in the, over at the police building, new James City County Police Building when we had the conference room meeting. I think that might have been your first one and you first described.
No, it wasn't. I remember my first one.
Oh, I know. When you described the, the very same concept. And at the time, I was intrigued, a little bit confused, but it made a lot of sense to really be thinking about, not right now, not five years from now, but what can we be and what should we be in the future? Because what we're doing is what's right for the children of this community. It's right for the people, but it's also a huge economic development investment. And if we expect businesses to come here and invest their money, we better provide the right kind of living experience, the right kind of educational experience and the right kind of training experience so that we have citizens prepared to work in these businesses. And going back to Mr. Goodson's idea when this first came up, Mr. Kennedy, thank you for bringing that up. I will say, I don't think there was a unanimity of agreement, at least not from the city's side, and I don't mean from the city council necessarily, but there were a lot of people in the city who were very concerned about the closure of a neighborhood school within the city limits. And they felt like there was a real loss. But there was also a belief that we had to work together to make something happen. We were getting ready to open a fourth middle school or another middle school at a time when if we kept Blair online, we'd be duplicating operational costs and have way more capacity than we needed. So we sacrificed the operation of this school to save on that duplication of infrastructure and save millions of dollars in operating expenses each year. The school board was in a difficult position, being spread all over the place in the administration. They moved into this building, but the idea was always to do something different here, whether it was to turn this into a, a full-time administration building at some point in the future or rebuild it as a school and find another home for the administration. So that's always been part of the plan. We're not talking about something new. This is a continuation of more than 10 years of work and I'm just, I'm just happy to see it heading in the right direction and I thank all of you for your effort.
Can I ask a question going back to options A and B?
Sure.
Option B, does that, does that also include having to move the administration out immediately? If we built a smaller facility, that could be expanded? Are you talking about leaving the administration and building schools on the property?
I don't.
No. Both options require the central office to be relocated first.
By May 2015.
Yeah.
And I, just from my position, this is a practical point. I don't believe that leasing space is in our best interest and I think if we're going to have to move the central offices, I think we ought to build it knowing it moving forward.
So I know this is a lot of information and so how do you wish to proceed? I mean, we're, we're in the middle of, we've got a budget that has this on the table and so.
So if I could, Ms. Larson, let me just suggest, and I, I want to thank Vice Mayor Filing for, for his comments because I think it reminds us that this is a discussion we've been having for a long time. Information has been shared for a long time. Circumstances have shifted occasionally. We've moved in preferences from move, trying to move back into this building with the, with some modest changes to recognizing that was not going to be appropriate, looking at alternate sites, talking about various possibilities of accommodating the central administration. But we've all known that we've had these needs and that we have to start figuring out how to address them. So I would hope that we would be able to provide some direction, both to the school board and as far as the city council and the Board of Supervisors is concerned, to our administrators about what they need to be planning for in this upcoming budget and for the next several years. There's a number of options that are sitting out here. I was a little surprised to see that, that looks to be a fairly similar cost to option A and B. I thought that I'd seem to report it as a somewhat larger differential, but that's certainly something worth taking into account. Is that, am I right about that?
Those were the costs that were provided, but I think you still have those same commons areas, a cafeteria, a gymnasium regardless of, for the most part, regardless of the size. But we're happy to take a look at those, but those are the numbers that were provided by the engineer.
But it does seem to me that what we really need to do is to, to be prepared to make some hard decisions in the short timeframe. First of all, that we recognize the need for a new facility, whether that new facility is on the site of an existing facility or it is someplace else. We need a new facility, that we need to relocate the administration building, that we need to provide some planning money that will help us direct it, get directed toward what option we're going to pursue. And we have to provide that direction to our staffs as, as quickly as we can. I mean, within weeks, not months.
Mr. Fuentes?
Dr. McGlynn, did you say you were, the cost between which options were you talking about? The option A and option B or you, the differential between the two?
Yeah, I was wondering about the differential between taking those, those two options.
So 30, building 40, 40 some million versus 31 million? That difference?
Plus. Plus, plus the addition down the line.
Right.
Oh, adding on the addition at the end. It was another twelve million because of, uh, those costs. Um, something I want to point out, I pointed this out the other night, and I feel, still feel strongly about this, as far as if we, we were talking about option B, and, um, the, the thought of options, it goes to this whole issue of expansion. In fact, Paul, he brought up all the different ideas of expanding the different schools, and every time they built a school, there's always been talk about that, and then when we go to do it, they go back. And every architect always has said, oh yeah, we can add on. Then when we go to do it, then there's, uh, the, the new architect says, um, no, you didn't think about this, this, and this. Um, so the other night, when we were talking about this, what's important to me is if we were to go with the option B, which is this phased approach, which, um, I think, I don't know whether that twelve million includes your escalation for, you know, present, uh, future worth dollars, but, um, which seems like a very viable option. But if we were to go for that option, which means that the school would be expanded, that the architect, in my mind, has to build the final product and then work backwards, um, so that we're not, um, in that same situation when we get down the road, where the next guy comes along and says, what in the world were they thinking? We need to see close to, now, I realize that when we get down the road, someone's going to look and say, you know, you know, um, education has changed, things have to be a little bit different, but, um, we run into this on all the different schools where, where they've talked about being able to expand, and then when we go to do it, there's always something that can't be done. So I'm, I'm just saying that if we go with option B, I'd like the architect to fini, provide what they envision the finished product to be, and then what, what the phase, that first phase looks like that we're going to do now. Is, and I think I've mentioned that the other night.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And I think that's, that's just, uh, an opinion that I shared then, and I wanted to reiterate it again today, um, because all of you, the question that's come up about the different high schools, about expandability, um, to talk about War Hill, and, and I think even James, Jamestown, one of the, uh, that was supposed to be expandable, but what happened was when they went to build it, in order to cut costs, I understand that they made the, the hallways smaller to save on square footage. They made some things smaller, and that's why expanding Jamestown became an issue. And I'm sure it's expandable, but you gotta fix some of those things now. Anyway, I just wanted to mention that again. Thank you.
And just one thing we need to keep in mind as we talk about expanding is that we, it, it won't just happen over the summer. So we have to have a place then for the students to go, you know, which is rather that's mobile classroom, but I mean, it would be quite, there would, it's not just that expense. There's additional operating expense to consider as we, if we go that route as well. So, we have the same issue with the hallways at Toano, I believe, too. So...
Now, in general, my experience has been chatting with citizens that they understand and are generally supportive of the expansion of the middle schools. The biggest concern I have heard about is the central office facility and costs. You know, they, you know, folks think about unused space in, uh, in James City County, Williamsburg, you know, and, and other options. I know that we are, we have a recommendation to purchase versus lease, but have we even looked into creative options? Maybe a lease purchase, where we don't have to take on the initial debt load? You said you talked to developers, and was that generally more for new construction and leasing, that basically build to our specifications, or possibly utilizing something existing we have?
Well, let, I'm, I'm let Dr. Constantino, but as far as the exist, there, is that reported here where we have, that we've really had a bullseye on, is how much space do we actually need? So we started here, and we've gotten here. So that's, we've worked very hard to make sure that we don't ask for more space than we need.
Started at sixty-five thousand, if I correct, if I remember correctly.
Right. So, we, we've, you know, we've really thought about that, and so, but I'll let Dr. Constantino speak as for the, for the lease.
I think your question, most recently, um, in the last, and when I say most recently, I'd say in the last twelve months, and I'm going to look at Ms. Stone, and she's going to help me remember. I think the discussions, any kinds of lease purchase discussions have been on build-to-suit issues. Um, prior to January 2013, the school board, um, and my office as well, were under the distinct impression that leasing was an option, and that, that changed in January 2013. Uh, it then changed again when we were asked to see if the land that was jointly owned by the city and the county could be utilized for a central office. And, and so what we did was to answer the questions that we had been asked by the liaison committee. Somehow, that all morphed into the superintendent wanting a Taj Mahal, and I understand that. Uh, the superintendent wants a central office, um, and when the decision about a middle school is made, that is going to direct a decision about, uh, a central office, and there is a, as we discussed today, there is a way that's going to have to happen, uh, in order to make it work. So, there also, to be fair, there was some very preliminary conversation, and I think Dr. McGlynn raised the issue in one of the liaison meetings about looking at PPA, PPEA options. That was looked into briefly, uh, but when all of this was kind of put on hold, I think those conversations were put on hold until we got to a point like this. So, does that help you a little bit?
And also, in your folder, you have a copy of the liaison presentation that was made on September eleventh, 2013, and that reviews some of the options, some of the preliminary liaison binding, um, options that we think we see from local.
Yeah, 'cause, you know, generally, parents, myself included, we want the money and the focus in the schools and in the classroom.
Right.
And I, you know, I'm sure, uh, many folks agree with that, and we even talked about the value of that teacher being in the classroom is the most important thing. So I, I just wanted to echo that that is a concern that I hear the most prevalently, prevalently in this discussion, and I think we need to be very cautious and frugal in our new central office decisions, and look for other creative options we may have.
And a point of clar- clarification, you're not, in the central office, you're not proposing a meeting chamber that would be, you would continue to utilize the, the Stryker and James City County facilities?
No, we're proposing a multipurpose space, primarily for, uh, professional development for teachers. We presently don't really have a space to do that, but a place that the school board could use for work sessions if they so desire. But the primary use of that room would be for, um, the professional development of, of nine hundred teachers.
What reuse sites did you look at? I know I'd asked Mr. Midah about that, and I never heard back.
I'm sorry, sir.
Reuse sites, have you looked at any vacant shopping centers, hotels, anything along those lines that could be retrofit and used?
We began that process, um, and, so the, the short answer is yes. There was some, there was some look, there was some investigation into looking at, um, uh, buildings that might be presently or were for sale at that time. I don't know what the present status is. But again, um, the emphasis of that changed in January 2013, when the discussion turned toward, we'd like the school division to look at this. One was this joint property. One was looking at the feasibility of a pad site right next door to it. Uh, and I have, I have misrepresented the name of that a number of times. I don't remember the name of that place, but where there are three office buildings, and there's a pad site. And then there was another, uh, another site that was brought in, which I believe was in Newtown, uh, which we, which we looked at. So, um, recently, I don't believe there has been any investigation about present buildings for sale that are, uh, would be of the suitable size, uh, and be able to purchase for retrofit for the central office. That certainly can be done. It was done a while ago, but it stopped.
You keep referencing January 2013.
Yes.
What was that? Because I, I'm not aware of that, so...
In, uh, in, in November or December of 2012, I don't recall exactly when, um, there was a, a request from, uh, the county for the three, uh, the city, the county, and the school division to get together to try to begin to determine the central office issue. And, uh, so the first of those meetings happened in January 2013, and it was at that meeting where the discussion, we actually came to the room prepared to talk about what we had discovered in terms of lease, in terms of purchase. The conversation turned toward, we're looking to, we're looking to buy a building, um, uh, we, purchase over lease, I guess, you know, that purchase was a smarter thing to do. And then the conversation turned toward these pieces of land. Uh, and we, we were thinking that we were doing our due diligence in answering the questions that were being asked of us.
I think Ms. Snutson had her hand up.
Um, a long time ago, when my children were in elementary school here, and it's a long time ago, the schools were not air-conditioned. And I remember going to a meeting where having these huge arguments about how much it was going to cost to air-condition the schools. And Ginny McLaughlin, Ginny Lake lac, as she was at the time, stood up and said, which one of you would work in an un-air-conditioned building? We were asking our teachers to work in an un-air-conditioned building, but none of us would be willing to do it. And I'm hearing some echoes of this. We don't want to build a nice building for the central office, because that would look bad. So we're asking the people running our school system to work in offices that might not be quite as nice as the ones we work in, that, that don't look, you know, like they're overdone. And I think we need to step back a little bit. What are we asking here? These are the people who are running the school system for us. These are the people who are creating the atmosphere where the teachers and the students can come together and make learning a good thing, and we're, we're trying to cut little corners here and there. Why don't we get to the central question, which is, do they need an office? They need an office. They need to figure out what they need, what's best for them, what's best for the school. I don't know what's best for the schools. I don't know what's best. I, these are the people we've asked to do this for us, and I think we need to get ourselves up a level or two and say, let's answer the question we've been asked. The question we've been asked is, is it time for another middle school? And therefore, is it time for a new central office? Those are the questions we've been asked. We haven't been asked to do the, the weeds work, and I don't think we should be doing it at a meeting like this. So...
Just to follow up on that, I, you know, I think if we're looking to, to create the best educated child we can, we have to hire and bring in and retain the best administrators and teachers we can, and we're not going to do that in subpar environment, at a school or in the central office. You know, renovating an old shopping center, um, I don't think is, is going to meet that need. You know, little cubicles in a, in a building with thirty-foot ceilings, um, just, it's not an appropriate environment, I think.
Mr. Nichols?
Uh, you know, to Mr. Pond's question about the space that, that would be used as a multipurpose room, uh, there are times when the school board doesn't have a home, when Stryker isn't available, nor is, or, uh, building F, so where do we go? Um, rather than being at the peripatetic school board, where you're always trying to find, where are they meeting now? It would be nice to have a location where people do know where we are. And when I was talking about, now, this is just Jim Nichols now, when I'm talking about a school space, I am talking about a room, but a room that is not fixed with a dais, or any, or fuse, or anything like that, but with chairs, so then a meeting is held there, it meets the requirements of the state, um, and when it's not meeting there, it can, it, it's a professional development, which will still need same, the same equipment that the school board would need in order to tape it, uh, video it, put it on the website, make it available through the web to other teachers for the training that's there, so that if they can't be on-site, they can see it. Uh, and it also could be live for them in training in certain instances. So, to make use of the twenty-first century technology, uh, and, and not, you know, create a space that's fixed, but that serves multiple needs, uh, for congregating people for learning and training and meeting.
Mrs. Pedaska?
Just wanted to point out some of the things that actually happened in the administrative building that people might not think about. Um, there are a lot of confidential things that happen here, disciplinary-related, special education, things that, um, cannot really be conducted in really close quarters. And so those, those needs certainly need to be considered. Um, in addition, I, um, I, I hope that our communication has been clear with regard to the reorganization that has been done in the central office. Um, there is really clear reporting structure. There is really clear, um, admonition as to what needs to be done. Um, we've had some really exciting things happening with our reading specialists, uh, and really looking at, you know, with the mandatory third grade retention, what we have to do to absolutely make sure that our kids can read, because if they can't read, they can't go, they can't go beyond, and that affects dropout rates and that sort of thing. So, there is a lot more happening than people just sitting in offices, and there's curriculum decisions that are being made by teams in meetings. And so, you know, it, I, I appreciate what, what you had to say. Um, I appreciate what Mr. Nichols has to say, and, and the fact of the matter is, if, if there's not a place to, to meet, we, we figure it out. Um, but we want to make sure that people in the community know where they come to meet, and sometimes that can be interesting if we're, if we're changing it all the time. Um, you know, we certainly appreciate having the fact to be able to use Stryker and, and to use the county buildings, and, and, you know, we, we depend on what the funders have to say, but, uh, you know, I do really want you to understand that it's more than meets the eye.
I'd just like to make a couple of statements, and one is, I'm sorry if I offended Judy about asking questions, but these are the questions we're being asked. So, I don't mind asking questions on behalf of my constituents who write the checks. James City County's going to be asked to fund roughly ninety percent of this building. So for asking questions, this is what we're being asked. This is what I'm being asked. This is what I have asked and didn't get answers to. So this is something that's been going on for quite some time, so I'm not quite certain why it would be offensive to ask questions about reuse of buildings, because we're asked about it all the time, reuse of sites. When it comes down to open space, what's available? I see the building down in Henry Street, which was the high-end medical building. I don't know if that's been looked at. I don't know if it's big enough.
It has.
I don't know if building up on your new building that you're building in Williamsburg would be a viable option, uh, if that would be something that could be explored. Um, you know, those are things that we don't know about. Uh, the references to, you know, January of thirteen, I wasn't very sure of. Um, you know, if there's something that, that we're not aware of, I certainly don't mind asking the questions about it. I know that we need space. I know that we're going in additional school. It was known when we'd made the decision here. It's just taken on a lot of different shapes and sizes throughout, and it, it's been somewhat, I don't want to say confusing, uh, but it's been something that's been in, in constant motion. And now we're down to, to the timeframe where we have to make decisions. We're certainly cognizant of the financial side of it in the county. Uh, we just met with our consultants, and certainly, a middle school is doable. The problem is when we throw in a central office. And, you know, looking at things that have to be done there, that I, I don't mind looking at and exploring, but we have to make sure there's a will.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Nichols?
Well, I, I think that's why you have Plan A and Plan B, option A and option B, because if you, if you go with option B, if it's doable for option A, it's very doable for option D.
I, I would certainly also, too, if citizens, I know citizens speak to me, if, if there are citizens that have questions about our central office needs, you know, please ask them to call the school board, ask them, and, you know, we will put them in touch with the central office staff and, and go over. I, I, I have to say, I really feel as though Dr. Constantino and his staff have been just about as upfront and transparent as any that I've seen. I mean, everything that we've looked at, we have put out on our website, it's been in our meetings, and, you know, we have, we have looked at the building that you mentioned. We, our operations staff has been on the road for years trying to find space that, that might work. And so, as far as you not getting that information in January, you know, I'm, I'm sorry for that, but I do know that Dr. Constantino was in constant communication with the county administrator. And, you know, I, I won't put Mr. Tuttle on the staff, but, uh, on the spot, but I know that he, you know, he lets us know, informs us of every time that he has a meeting with the county and the city, and he does his best to, you know, we're not holding anything back. This is what we have, and, and we want to work with you to now, how we can do the best thing for the students of Williamsburg, James City County.
Well, I guess my other question would be, you said that you've cut back from sixty thousand square feet to thirty-five.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five to thirty-five. Now, where does that leave you for future usability and growing into?
Well, it's four, as Ms. Stone pointed out, after she, keep in mind, we don't have our staff, we don't have planners, we don't have engineers on staff, but she, now, more realistic number is forty. And when we did talk about this, we did talk about future growth. Mr. Kelly brought that up, and it was already included, but Mr. Kelly reemphasized that at one of our meetings to make sure that...
Well, how many years out? Well, how many years out does that put you for growth? If you add 10 more schools, or five more schools, or three more schools, where does that put you?
It, it put us out, I think the term that we used at the time was between five and 10 years. It was hard to estimate based on enrollment projections. Everything is based on enrollment projections. You're fairly, you're fairly confident about enrollment projections for the first five years, less reliable for the second five years. So, we went, we used the same approach for the central office in, in creating growth, saying, "We're pretty sure these are the needs for the first five years." And what we shared with the board is that between five and 10 years, we would need an estimate of X number of square feet, and that's all in the, that's all in the report that we detailed.
It was 3,000, which was per feet. For that period, and it's included in the report.
And we actually identified...
And is it going to go up, not out, or is it something that's expandable, your projections or proposals?
Which building?
The central office building.
Add another floor, for example?
Uh, yeah. We hadn't gotten that far, quite frankly, because, to be honest, we have to pay an architect every time we ask him a question, and we were asking as few questions as possible. But yes, it could go up, it could go out. It depended on the property, it depended on where it was located.
Correct.
The piece of property, for example, that the city-county owned, I think we determined that the building would go up.
The, the one thing that I would really stress is with this building, with a new middle school, with any future building, that if there are any changes to the design of the building, capacity, hallways, anything like that, that, that be a consultation with the appropriating bodies before it's done, because this is where the dilemma comes in at times, is these questions aren't asked. And then we talk about it Jamestown, well, gee, we'd have to move the walls. Or, you know, and this is a relatively new school. We all know the contentious issue when Jamestown was built, so we want to make sure that if there's something coming up, that if the budgets are a little short, that it's raised, that decisions aren't made that would limit your expandability or limit things that may need to be done in the future, that we keep those options open.
And I hear you, and I can't speak for 100%, but I think that in the past, when those decisions were made, they were brought back. And, and I know, I know that we, we brought back the parking at Blaton and Hornsby, that had to be cut, and that is an issue. So, we do come back, but I mean, we, moving forward, we certainly will continue to do so, because I hear you. I, I, you know, I mean, we don't want to be caught in that situation either. We, we want to have the core areas there ready to expand. If, you know, we don't want to be Loudoun County that's redistricting yearly. You know, we don't want that disruption. We've worked very hard to minimize the disruption to our families, and so, if there's a possibility to expand, yes, we're, we're interested in that, too, from a fiscal and from a disruption standpoint.
If I may ask, from, from the, and I'll look to the Jame City County Board of Supervisors, if, I'll ask you first, if you, if, would it be a tremendous issue if, if the board members would like a little more time to study this information? Would that, would, I know you all are looking for guidance this evening, but I'm asking if it, if the board...
Well, everybody has to have a goal.
...like more time, because I would, I would like more time to study this and to study, to study the, to study the options. And, and, you know, I appreciate, I, as I said before, I understand there's been, this was communicated, that was communicated, and, and I can't fix that right now. But what I do want to do is make sure that we are making the best decision for the students, for the community, and for, and fiscally. And if, if the board, I wouldn't mind having a little more time to study this information if other board members would like to, if you would like to, if you're ready to give guidance, if the majority is ready to give guidance right now, that is fine, but I would suggest that we take a little more time, at minimum, for us to communicate back by our next board meeting, which would be in two weeks. That would be the goal. So, it wouldn't be, there would be just, I promise.
No, I understand.
It would be a deadline.
And I understand this is an important decision. I would only say that I would most likely recommend to the school board that they adopt a budget with the figures as they stand now. They're placeholder figures, understanding, if we all just understand that if the school board were to adopt and forward a budget, certainly, as decisions are made in the CIP, those numbers could change.
You said March 18th is when...
Is when they, is when I would recommend the board do that. They don't have to do that, they can call another meeting. I, I think by April 1st, they have to have it done in two years, so that would involve them having to call a special meeting if they chose to do that, which is certainly within their, within their rights.
So, are you saying that you would have a decision, or you would hope to, by March 25th? Is that your next meeting after tonight?
Correct.
Are we going to discuss this at our work session?
We can. I think we're going to have...
I know we have tourism.
Time issues, we can certainly have it during a board discussion at the, the seven o'clock meeting.
I'd like to talk to John McDonald on the finance side of it.
But the board, the board can certainly, between now and then, get, if you have questions, get those out to Dr. Costantino and the school board, to John McDonald, and so that we have, we can gather the information before we go to the next meeting. And if the board comes to, you know, in discussions, that we can give guidance prior to, but I think it is, at this point, it'd be best for this board to have a discussion at our board meeting, to then pass on that guidance, so...
And I would, I would feel more comfortable with some additional information on the central office options. While we certainly don't need the Taj Mahal, no one was suggesting an inadequate facility, but, excuse me, as Supervisor Kennedy mentioned, can we even briefly look at other options that may be available within our community for repurposing? Looking if a lease purchase would be an option that would give us the opportunity to move forward with a purchase without acquiring the additional debt? You know, maybe if we could have some sort of, just review on that for some creative solutions, then I think that would help our Board of Supervisors make a more informed and more comfortable decision.
Certainly, we'll do our best to pull whatever information we can as quickly as we can.
Right. I know it's a short amount of time, but...
I just want to reiterate that we have looked at every site that's available in Jame City County, and there's been some suggestions of some sites outside of Jame City County.
Are we talking central office or school sites?
Central office.
Well, I guess that does open up, the, the other thing that we, that we need to hear is if there is other space that you want us to look at besides James Blair, if you want to leave us here, but you have another land site somewhere that you can, that we can go to.
And we as a board need to, need to make sure that we're doing that, that due diligence.
Right.
Absolutely.
But I, I do, and I'm sorry I'm reemphasizing it again, but I'm going to, just in case someone did not hear, that, that might be listening at home when this is played, please know that we have looked and, I mean, we will look again, but what you are asking is something that we have done, and we will do so again, but we, we didn't just go in and say, "Okay, we want to build." We, we've looked at all the possibilities, but we will, now, for me, I'm not going to look at leasing space in York County for our central office, which has been suggested.
I thought I heard someone say they had looked, but it had been some time. Like, it had been, we're not sure what's currently...
Well, I think our operations staff has continued to look, but, but I will let Dr. Costantino go back to them and...
I think the best answer is we'll make sure that the information we have is up to date. I believe it is, but if it's not, we'll make sure it's up to date and get it to you.
Could I, could I just clarify, though, about this question about an alternate site for the middle school?
Yes, sir.
There is not a Plan A and Plan B in that regard, then, I assume, because Plan B seems to be conditioned on the notion that you would have the expandability, and it also means relatively little additional site work or land acquisition costs, infrastructure and the like. So, it is not going to be a $31 million option.
Right. We're just saying, we don't own land other than this plot of land, and we, you all are the ones that would purchase that or let us know where that is, and no one, we realize that the land up in Stonehouse has been proffered, but other than that, we're not aware of any other land, which is, we base this A and B on this plot of land here.
And Chair, and also, I will, I'm just emphasize, I don't think I made this clear for me personally, I absolutely support repurposing this facility, and however that, reutilizing this property in this facility. And I don't know if I actually said that prior, my, where I would like a little more information is regarding the administration office. And, and, but I, 100%, I think, but we also need to be looking long-term, too, and let's get an inventory of what's available. What do we have?
We would appreciate that.
And move, and, and put forward, I know there's been discussion, there was in the last comprehensive plan, a James, a public facilities master plan. And obviously, things change, and there, you know, there are shifts in upward population densities increase, we don't have metric ball, but I think really putting that effort, putting that energy into that, I think will make a big, be a significant help as, as we move forward, so...
Thank you.
Ms. Larson, you did, but let me just offer, the city council will be happy to work with it in whatever time, right, works for the Board of Supervisors.
I was going to ask before I, before you left this evening. Thank you. Let me just take this opportunity again to thank you all. I know you have meetings this evening, and you had to leave your other jobs. People don't believe that you have other jobs, but you had to leave your other jobs and come over here and meet with us, and we very much appreciate your time. And let me also thank the, the school administration for all that they have done to put this together. I have to, I just have to say that I don't, you know, I, this is, I believe, Dr. Costantino is, is the second superintendent that I've worked with, and, and I have to tell you, he goes above and beyond with information, and so, I, I just don't want that to, to be forgotten, that I believe he's been very transparent and has done his best to work with the county and the city, and I want to thank you for that, and thank your staffs as well for all that they have done. So, we appreciate the support that you have given. I think that does speak to our enrollment continuing to increase, that this community does have a premier school division and a community that people want to live in, and I think there's a lot to be said about that. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
And with that, I guess, the school board, without objection, will adjourn?
I'd like to the board for permission to adjourn, please.
Motion.
We have motion on the floor. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Kennedy?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
I move the city council to adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Miller, would you call the roll, please?
Aye.
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 Aye.